It requires it to be infiltrating straight into like a lower area infiltrating into the ground. They're proposing a little higher probably.
Yeah, so shit. Wisely.
So it doesn't quite meet the requirement of the law, but it's still green.
So it's still a waiver.
Right, the intent on this was that, yes, we showed that a property theoretic complete return, but we left the curb out, left it level so that if there is space that needs to be needed for whatever purpose, they're not going to risk taking a truck.
Right, okay. So you have a multiple curb or?
Multiple curbs, just as you wrote. That was at the five T's request, I believe.
Okay. All right. So why don't we do them individually? So what's the board's wish on this waiver from section six? B six, is it? Let's scratch through it.
What talk are you reading from?
Where site conditions are favorable, cul-de-sac islands shall be used to treat and infiltrate runoff through bio-retention. So we have a motion to waive that requirement.
Which one?
The first one.
First waiver.
Section six B six. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
First and second now.
What?
First and second. First and second.
All right, so that one passed.
You first and you second?
First and second.
Oh. That's good.
And the second one is sidewalks shall be constructed on one side of all subdivision streets and ways. That's section six C. Do we have a motion on that?
No.
To waive that?
No.
Okay, motion to approve the waiver of sidewalks. We have a second?
Second.
You got that?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor? Or do we have, do we need further discussion? This is the voting time.
Yep.
Yep.
All in favor of waiving the sidewalk requirement?
No sidewalks.
For no sidewalks, so that's me. I say waive it.
I say waive it.
I agree.
All ready?
You can't vote.
We just voted.
You can't vote. You can vote. You said you're in bottom of the MDC, you worked it up, you said you couldn't vote, you were not voting. You said what you say.
This is not a public hearing. Thank you. So the public hearing portion in, and the law, the law is different. Is, we established that.
Then why didn't you tell us you wanted to be excused or will you be accepted to the board?
I was accepted already, so I'm on, I can vote.
We're accepting you to participate, not to vote.
So the point before us is waive the requirement for sidewalks. There are two to waive it. And there, those against waiving it?
I'm, no, I, I'm trying to stay with the trade in sidewalks for the past.
So you're for it or against it?
And for waiving the sidewalks, I guess.
So four waiving sidewalks. So three to waive the sidewalk requirement, two against, so it passes, I think.
Maybe I'll get off the plane and vote.
You may not get reelected.
No, no. Four more years, then I won't get reelected.
All right. Uh, we're not doing anything about the playground stuff.
Testing.
Oh, do we need to waive that? Planning board shell and properties require?
Do we waive it or do we just not?
It says in proper cases, and so I don't, what's your, we can vote on that now, but I don't know that we need to.
Did you ask for that way or do we impose that way?
Because they're, they're, the bylaws require evaluating.
So let's do it.
Okay, so approval of a, the board shell in proper cases require the plan to show a park or parks suitably located for playground or recreation purposes, purposes, or for providing light and air. So planning board is, there's a request to waive that requirement for a park on this site. So do we have a motion to waive that requirement?
A motion to waive the requirement.
A second.
And any other discussion?
Can you, can you remind me why we are waiving it?
Uh, because it's a small.
Is it small?
Area this, um, it's, the public has access down to the park down at Woodland Park, and if we were to have a park up here, the town would have to buy the land and develop the park itself.
Now the sidewalk is gone.
I don't think there's any rooms.
Well, there's room up in the back. There are no easements or anything like that, so this would be a tough time to be requiring that since we've already got a plan, but it's.
Sure, but wasn't that time outside?
Yeah, sidewalk's coming down.
Well, I'm just, it's up to you guys. It's a board vote.
Well, on this one.
All right. Any other discussion?
Wait, what's the wording? Which way does?
It's in the positive, to waive the requirement.
Waiver says no park.
No parking. No, no playgrounds.
No playgrounds.
No playgrounds.
We waive the requirement for playground.
Okay, do we motion?
Any other discussion? Yep. Any in fa, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay. Any opposed? One. That passes.
You really don't get reelected.
In the last, eight, the fourth requested waiver is section six B ten, that the roadways shall conform to the typical roadway section, which is plate one. So this is to reduce the right-of-way width for a portion four point, less than five feet at station zero plus ninety-eight point three to one plus zero two point nine.
And that's the?
That's a little section there.
That section there.
So basically, I mean, we've all, we've discussed.
Yeah, we discussed that last time, it was fine.
Do we have a motion to waive that?
Motion to waive that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, or do we need discussion on this?
No, we discussed it last time.
Yeah, I think, you know, I did ask last time, and for me, you know, the applicant, you know, they did not make any effort on that.
Anything with your three choices?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so do we have any other discussion?
This waiver is, you know, except getting some, you know, easy way out.
Well, what we can require is that they talk. It appears that they've talked. They didn't, if they didn't come up to a reasonable agreement that both are happy with, we, we can't make people be reasonable based on their expectations or their own expectations.
I think that's what we requested of both parties, was that they discuss it and try to come to some resolution to this problem. I'd like to feel that if there's no resolution between the two parties, it falls to us to do something to get the project to move. And the waivers, you know, we can do, we can't make them resolve there.
Yeah, but I don't think so, you know, if there is any, any talk happened, any discussion happened, yes.
Again, we've got feedback in the meeting, in the public hearing, that there was discussion. It was, uh, there was no agreement made. There was no.
Clearly, there was no.
Right, so that was it. The way, the thing that I'm looking at is if this were a large strip, it's basically six feet by, it's a triangle, that's less than six feet long one way and ten feet the other side, so if you do your math there, it marked six.
Thirty square feet.
How many square feet in a six by ten triangle?
Is it a right triangle?
It's right, yes.
It's right, so thirty square feet.
Yeah, thirty. Yeah.
Sixty, yeah.
Sixty to ninety-two.
So there you go, so thirty square feet, so.
Right triangle.
There was discussion, so we can go through all the different things, but it's not a big portion. They can do the construction without going in there, so that's the situation.
Well, in the other half, I mean, I'd like to add also that the existing spur is only forty feet wide, and that's why it's forty feet at the edge of the property. I mean, unless the two properties didn't match up at that spur, I mean, I think that's why it's like, and that's why it's sort of the town's fault that they got stuck with this problem.
Well, it's not.
I mean, there was the rules back then.
Back then, all they needed was forty, forty feet wide, so they're doing the best they can with what they've got.
We could ask the ZD to do some grandfathering work.
Okay, all right, yeah. So we've got a motion, do we have a motion yet on this one?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Do we need any further discussion or we beat it to death?
Beat it to death.
I think we beat it to death.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, all those opposed?
Thank you.
Six.
And then, so that passes. So those are this, and. Okay, so what we have to do is draft it.
We draft, just a few tweaks.
I do.
You want to add more to that?
Don't shut that.
No.
No.
Yeah, you gotta submit that.
District Patagonia.
Sidewalks pass, right?
Yes.
Bearings pass.
Three, two.
All right.
A fortune on this.
It's all right, so.
Somebody leave a small.
We don't have an opinion signed yet.
Yeah, but he waited until the end.
But I can get it drafted and circulated.
You should have.
Yeah, we were last time.
Did you vote for Trump?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're right. All right, so.
On the stormwater part?
Oh, my God.
Yes, so we now have before the board, is the board still here?
Yes, the board's still here.
So we have to vote on the certificate of approval for.
For Weston Circle.
For Weston Circle, Moldenbrook Realities Limited, LLC, the continued subdivision plan at Weston Circle Extension.
For including single family?
For, yep, as proposed, eight. You want to do the motion? It sounds like you're going.
Yes, Raj should make the motion.
You lied to these people when you said you could not vote.
There's a motion.
You said that you could not vote here, you were welcome to participate, and that's why we accepted you. Now you say, that doesn't matter, I can vote? Good. He's a lawyer, you call him.
So we have, we have to make a vote on, we have to put a vote onto this certificate of approval. So are people in favor of the eight lot subdivision? Seven hundred fifty linear feet of road? Where is it? I wrote it in here somewhere. Seven hundred fifty foot long proposed roadway, Westland Cir, Weston Circle Extension, showing eight proposed single-family lots. Do we have a motion to approve, accept, to approve? Motion to approve.
Design a code of.
We've already done the waivers.
We have done.
We've already done the waivers. Oh, we want to do it together?
So you want to do that and stormwater together?
So we can do it together and issue us, and issue the stormwater management permit for this project.
Yes, okay, so add that to whatever the motion.
I can't make a motion, I'm fair.
He can make a motion, he's a chairman.
I'm just helping.
You said the words, I didn't really memorize them. Motion to accept the.
Bottom of the first paragraph.
Property proportional with two acres.
Two, two lines above that. Seven hundred fifty foot long.
Concerning a seven hundred fifty foot long proposed roadway, Weston Circle Extension located on Weston Circle, showing eight proposed single-family lots. And the stormwater approval.
Stormwater management permit. Second.
All right, any discussion on those? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Ooh, unanimous. All right. All right. Thank you for your patience. So that one's done.
Both voters.
All right, next on our agenda. We got to keep moving here.
Okay.
You want to break or you?
No, that's fine.
That one's ours. We go over to the story.
Yeah, can you go?
You're doing fireballs.
Oh, you don't? Oh, okay, yes.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Fireballs.
All right.
Just because it's not right control.
How do you think at this point?
Surprise, but. All right, so we have a continued site plan.
We can't go on emotions, we have to go on.
Continued site plan review. Focus, people, let's go, we're not going to be here all night.
You go over to the O, okay.
So site plan review for the Girl Scouts Service Center located on Century Drive. Did we get a number?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, okay.
All right. Lot sixty.
That's, I got that part, okay. All right.
So hi, Josh Swole, professional engineer with Fuller Engineering. My colleague Tony Donato was here before you at the last meeting. I believe we had gotten all of Wayne's comments addressed as of his maybe second letter and some follow-up correspondence. We now have a white final fence around the rear of our site where the retaining wall is. We've clarified with the fire department that they don't need stairs, but we have a sidewalk that leads down to the right-of-way, kind of in between the hydrants that they were interested in seeing. Um, let's see here, we've closed up with the Western Conservation Commission, and that's all I have. I have plans here, if you are so inclined to endorse them. Obviously, if Wayne has any other sage advice and counsel.
So all the comments were, are included on the current plans that are dated today?
What did you do, delete the steps to the, to the fire hydrant?
Oh, it's due April fifth.
He was satisfied with just the sidewalk going out to the right of way.
Way down the bottom?
Plan and change.
So what's the date on the plans?
The latest.
Oh, wait, you get them.
May ninth, two thousand eight.
Oh, yeah, right, because it was today's date, so that's good.
So you have the draft.
I think so. Can't find the draft.
Yep, there is through May ninth. And all those findings and suggested conditions and the whole waiver rules were all satisfactory to the F.
All right.
So how many waivers do we have on?
I'm trying to find it, so if you could walk me through the waivers.
You need the copy?
I think so.
Continue.
The waivers were for the thirty scale? It fits up to thirty scale, yeah.
Yeah, that was.
None of them.
I think that's the only.
Yeah, I think that's right. Someone might follow.
It should be in that.
It's in there.
One of those yellow. It's been the letter. It's not even just one line.
I definitely.
See it?
Girl Scouts. Thank you. Yellow stickies are good. Because double sizes didn't work.
Apparently it didn't work.
You want to borrow my number now?
They're reading.
Oh, no, cynical.
Not until the last minute.
Oh, sir.
It was online, you got it.
How did I get two of two?
Yeah, we got it.
Who wrote this? Well, some, somebody put it, page, it's page one of one, or page two of two, page three of three, page four of four, so I.
They're all word novice.
Microsoft.
They're wrong, yeah. You guys didn't catch it.
And you make so much money at this.
But you're holding the paper, how can I catch it?
I didn't even get the odd pages.
No, in the email that I sent a week ago with this stuff.
You guys had them all.
It was all sent out, that's why we hope you guys review it.
You get paid for that.
Who does?
You.
You?
Oh, yeah, sure. You make so much money.
All right, so where are we, where are we at? So the issues were the fire department, and it seems like they're all set. Wayne, did you have anything else?
No, just mentioned the two things, it was the fence replacement and satisfying the fire department's concern. I did have a clarification on page five, and it's probably good we talked about this because this has come up on a couple of other projects. So your zoning specifically disallows the use of chain link as a screening mechanism.
Right.
I guess this is a question to the board, not to take up your time, but it's kind of important because it affects several, maybe regarding, so they volunteered to replace the chain link on top of the wall after we dealt with another project, I'm not sure they actually had to, because it's not really, in my opinion, it's not really a screening. It's not for dumpster, it's on top of the wall. They just, they chose the easier route, and I don't blame them for doing that.
You would prefer a chain link.
So, I mean.
What's on the plan?
But you can, we have, in many weeks, a condition.
Yeah, I saw something at five thirty, and I was like, too late. Times was fire.
You could just put a condition, that the applicant agrees to change the proposed final exit of chain link or whatever, if that's what.
Well, I think what we can do is we can prove it as is, and then if they want to make a construction change, that's something we can prove as.
I mean, I guess, nobody answered me, so how does the board interpret that? So the zoning specifically, specifically says that chain link cannot be used for screening purposes. It's been kind of interpreted on multiple projects now that we can't just use chain link at all, and I think that's incorrect. I think it can be used, specifically around basins, which is where it came up.
Right.
And in a situation like this, where it's on top of the wall, not really providing a screening, it could be at the applicant's choice.
It's for safety, right?
Yeah, that's, that's the intent.
For safety.
On top of the wall, it's to prevent someone from popping over, correct?
So I think that interpretation makes sense, the idea that it's for screening.
It could be, in this situation, it could be either, so nothing needs to change, and if they decide to change it, like you said, they could come back with a, an email to you saying, we're requesting this, is this a significant or a major change, and you could say it's insignificant, show it on the ad.
That way we don't have to wait and sign something else. Waiting is always the hard part.
Should we say that if it's chain link, you can't have those flutes in it because that implies screening?
No, no, it's not, it's not saying you can't screen it, it's just not required.
Oh, it's not a screening requirement?
Correct. It's, this is not a screening application.
And we wouldn't have the, the boost slats, that's all, we just do like the final.
And then we wouldn't go through it?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we're good with that. Doesn't seem like there's any other issues. Can we, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
We already closed the public hearing.
No, we didn't.
You sure?
Yes.
You continued.
We continued it to tonight.
I meant to close it.
Do it now.
But he was.
They both begin with C, I understand.
Oh, I left it over at the fire thing, that's right, all right, good.
Yeah.
All right, now, motion to close the public hearing.
Do you need simple mediat?
Um, site plan review approval, there's no special permits.
Simple.
Yep. Why, do we have issues with anything?
I think I have.
Oh, right.
You hate the Girl Scouts.
Don't go there, we don't have time, let's, so, we have a motion, do we have a second?
He's not Girl Scout, he's just.
Second. Second.
Second, all right. Do we, oh, I'm sorry, are there comments from the public? Nothing, good. Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
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 Abstention.
All right, so that sounds good. People had a chance to review the approval.
Yes, we had a chance.
Did you take that chance?
No, I did not take a chance.
I read it.
Yeah, actually, it was good, you did a good job. You live in town, you want to get on the board?
There's a non-Girl Scout.
Not after tonight, right?
Yes.
Nobody's got a lot of.
Nobody's.
So I think we've got everything included.
It's never happened before, I would never try to get up and walk out.
So, all right.
We have a lot of patience.
I don't like being talked down to.
All right, so are there any other issues with this approval letter that was sent out as a draft?
Mr. Reviewer?
I read it, I liked it.
Yep, I think everyone else did. So.
That's good.
Accepted the missing street number.
We have a waiver request?
We can't get that, they don't have it on the property.
Well, they can set it, but that's, oh, the street number, how do we do that?
Did you say lot six A with?
Yeah, I got it in there, it's lot sixty, so.
Yep.
But I had, oh, did you take out the question marks?
I did.
Okay, good, all right. All right, so that's good, I was afraid it was in here.
Yeah, that identifies it, yeah.
There was nothing, and then I saw an email later on that they asked me for a number, but of course he hasn't answered.
All right, so thank you. So do we have a motion to grant the waiver on the reduction or the change to the scale on the plans from twenty scale to thirty scale?
Motion to change the scale on the plan from twenty.
So we'll grant the waiver.
Grant the waiver.
Did somebody make it?
They have.
Grant the waiver, grant the waiver to the agent.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so everyone's yes?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Do we get to sign them?
Where's the last one? I'm going to sign my last one.
And the site plan review, and to issue a stormwater management permit. Do we have a motion to issue the certificate of site plan review approval and stormwater management approval for the Girl Scouts of Central and Western Massachusetts?
Ocean.
Some moves.
Totally.
So we have a second, do you get that, Melanie?
Sure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. One abstention.
Who did it, you seconded, Cheryl?
Yes.
Oops, Dan.
Raj, who was here.
He was not in one of the hearings. Raj is not in one of the hearings.
Oh.
Alright, so we get that, we can sign off on this one.
Did I give you all the papers on it?
You did, but we got to change the header, because it's the two of two and three of three. I messed that up somehow.
How do you do that?
We're only signing the fourth page, which is four of four, which works.
Oh, lucky.
Do you guys want to sign your signature?
Can you wait for another meeting? We can take them and then do them at our next meeting? Because we have, oh, she is here. We've got someone after you.
Could I leave them with you, you sign them, and I pick them up sometime?
We'll have to sign them later.
Yeah.
Well, we'll send them to the next meeting, but...
Well, we can send them tonight.
You get the approval, it has to get appealed. So...
That starts.
That starts with this.
Well, you want to sign it tonight after the meeting's over?
I'd love it if you could sign it tonight and we could do that.
Alright, well, let's leave them out and see how late we go.
Because he's kind of filing with the building department, because they're going to want to see the signature.
Yeah, I don't mind signing it tonight.
Let them out, yeah.
Raj, do you want to lay it on the table over there or something?
Sure.
That would be good.
That'd be great.
And those Mylar, or those papers?
Paper.
Good, okay. So we have to get the Mylar pen, but we don't, good.
Do you need a pen, I'll run out.
Nope, nope, we're all set.
We have pens.
Just sign them.
So, did we vote on that motion to issue the permit?
Oh, did you include the stormwater?
And the stormwater management permit.
You get this?
Everyone in here, when you were standing?
Yeah, we were the ones to do it.
No, he was asking, we did it.
Yeah, you did, yeah. Because you said it in your motion.
Alright, so next on our agenda, eight o'clock. Thank you for your patience, Trish. How come you didn't send the first, the person who was coming, was it?
I will tell you that, she just had a baby.
Oh, we must be lucky, West Boylston, we're just humping them out. Danielle, was it, who was doing, Open Space had a baby?
Yeah, I know, what's up with that?
Sorry, we're lucky. Yes, yeah. So, actually, before you start, Wayne, I don't know if you need to for anything else.
Us?
I'm going to go, me, sorry.
It was a good friend.
Feels like I bring the whole guy.
Do you need anything for...
I have like, I use construction resources, my information company.
She gave you the first time.
Yeah, I don't care what's going on.
Okay. So I think we're moving.
It's the season.
The next meeting.
Last meeting.
Last meeting. But I'll be here for the marijuana meeting next Tuesday, I'm looking forward to it. I'm hoping some hot-headed people come to that, too.
Alright, thank you for staying, Wayne, thanks for the input.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Do I say, want a cookie? Do I say?
No.
Cookie for the road, no?
Well, you can do that, this plan, this is not going to start cooking.
Alright.
We do need to, because we have a project today.
I love the Girl Scouts.
Alright.
We just don't have Girl Scouts.
We gotta just make it through.
I will be brief. I will be brief.
I know you want to be.
I do, I do, thank you so much for the opportunity to meet with you this evening. So, based on the receipt of District Local Technical Assistance Funds to be able to match the Energy and Environmental Affairs Grant, we are now able to go through the town of West Boylston to work, to develop a village center bylaw, so we're very excited about that. West Boylston is one of six communities that we're working with, I don't remember all the others, it's like, hopefully, I'll do a lot of...
But we're the most important.
It is, right now, exactly.
For tonight.
Tonight, exactly. And until... I threw the, the West Boylston zoning bylaw, the West Boylston master plan.
Is it ticking?
I don't know.
All the relay torn, maybe it's going to be.
Our batteries are low, probably, that's alright, continue on.
You're from Mystic Lake, and... So she's read through the zoning bylaw, read through the, the previous master plan, I know that you guys are considering updating your master plan. No, you're not.
Charles.
Charles. You're not.
We're drafting a townwide, a townwide...
Master plan.
No, not the master plan.
It's a town, it's like a three, five year timeframe, townwide. It's a townwide, they're not a master plan.
That's an update to a townwide plan. Okay. So she's, she's reviewed that and pulled out a couple different sections that really kind of make, kind of just shore up the fact that village center zoning is an overlay district. It's really consistent with the, the planning that the town has consistently done. So the, the presentation she's done, let me take a little picture. She's gone back and looked at several of your previous planning board meetings and, and pulled out some of the conversations that you discussed related to, to something similar. So, the summary of the discussions that you, you know, in a village center, and I think one of the maps in here actually presents a draft of what you might want to consider as a district, as an overlay district. You know, this evening, you don't have to give, you know, you don't have to approve it, deny it, you know, just for consideration, it may be a future meeting or have it come back. She's looked at all of the, you know, kind of the, the streets, the configurations, the existing uses, and, and kind of proposes this as one alternative. So you guys might want to take a, a close look at that, consider, you know, what, you know, what you know is, is being the case in this, in this district, and figure out, you know, if you want to adjust it, enlarge it, shrink it down, include pieces that are not included in here, or even if there's other villages that you might want to consider.
Can you make it like a smoke line, rather than zigzags?
No, because that's what we get into when we get things mapped.
Then you end up cutting between as a parcel.
This goes along the property lines, so this is good, even though it looks really jagged, it follows the property lines. So one property is either in or out.
The one else can be in this and the...
The next neighbor can be outside.
Exactly, exactly, we're actually...
I have them out in the year, I have them in the...
That's two, two separate house lots.
So there may be, you know, like, you guys may have information that suggests, you know, that we cut somebody, you know, somebody may have two lots and we cut something in half. If that's the case, you know, we definitely want to consider that. Or maybe there's a, a, a home occupa, you know, a home occupation that's in a building that's behind that, or something that you want to include as an op, as an option to kind of enlarge it or something to shrink it. There is a kind of funny little jog right there. What is that?
Is it behind the school or something?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Where?
It's right behind the, the build, the... This is Town Hall, right?
On Franklin Street?
Yeah.
No, Town Hall's the very end.
Oh.
It's right next, it's going behind the bank.
Up there to the right.
Oh.
My right, I guess.
That one, isn't it?
Further. No, that's...
Oh, right here, sorry, you're right, you're right, there, okay. Anyway, so, on Franklin Street. You guys can take a look at that and kind of consider whether, you know, if there's pieces to bump out, and, you know, maybe Church Street, I don't know. What these two purple buildings are, and Elizabeth has taken a good hard look at some of these. Again, we're not doing six of these at one time, and so, Frank, consider, you know, a variety, he was looking at each town's zoning. So, based on the previous comments from, that you've done in some of the earlier zoning planning board meetings, or in the draft ordinances, should address minimizing noise and lighting disturbances into the abutting businesses and residential uses. Provide buffers between abutting residential zones in the village center districts. Provide adequate parking with proposed reductions due to parking sharing. Allow for off-site parking options. Promote safe and adequate pedestrian circulation. Again, this is kind of consistent with complete streets, something that the Commonwealth is really encouraging, you know, especially because so many of our communities are looking for that reserve, that kind of, that, that new evil feel, or feel, and to move back to it, or they've come straight, if you want...
Strip mall.
Exactly.
Parking in back.
Yeah, exactly. It does not promote single-family housing, it does not promote one-story buildings. It promotes clear examples of allowed prohibited uses, provides limits, limitations on sizes of building uses, and really promotes the preservation of historic aspects of the neighborhood. So, what I've also included here in the packet is, and it's pretty much what the summary of the discussion says, is there, on the, the state's website, they have a number of kind of model bylaws that we can kind of start with, that we're going to work with a number of towns. And I presented that model bylaw here, I think Elizabeth has used that in part to kind of develop this, so...
What's the, this is that page?
Yeah, that's...
What's TND?
TND, I think is...
Something with the original TND.
I think it's Neighborhood Design. It's, and I forgot what the T is for, the answer. And then behind that, you'll see there's kind of the, the model itself. So what, and again, this is typically is done as an overlay district, so it still protects underlying, underlying zone. In large part.
It's going to contradict some underwinds on it.
It may, and so that's what, that's where she will, she'll be able to work with you closer to, to kind of look for those disparities and kind of decide how to move forward.
Yeah, because, who was it, a couple years ago that was doing this? He can't, he said he had a list of where it didn't comply with zoning, like all the aerial...
And maybe, maybe it isn't done as an overlay, but, you know, there's definitely that as an overlay.
We can talk about that.
He said that like thirty percent were not...
Yeah, because this is where it's applying.
They were all...
Does that work? From our office? I think so.
Yes, yeah, yeah, from a couple years ago, so...
Usually move the law with us.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
So it's in, I know it's in the name of the law. Yes.
He's like a town planner in some place.
Oh, Apple.
Yes. So, but somewhere, hopefully, there's still that list, because he did spend some time working on it.
He did, he did something like this, too, with some color coding on what the...
My guess is that she's kind of drawn from, from that.
Yes, which is good. I just didn't want it to...
Get lost.
Have never heard of that.
You should have used that.
We can be, it would be the first time to say if somebody's been lost in our computer system, but we hope that it doesn't happen.
Did you leave in the other building?
Right, somewhere there in the Union Station or something. So that's what I have for you this evening, you know, something to, to take a look at. Provide us some feedback on what you think about it. We're happy to come back and, you know, take your feedback, send comments to Elizabeth or myself, and we'll, we'll revise kind of based on some of the comments we come back to. The duration of this grant, you know, we, the goal of this grant is really to provide you with a bylaw that you can take account of. We have between now and, I believe, in June or next year, to get feedback, so...
So I think the timing that we recently talked about before all the delays because of the, the utility funding, this falls town meeting.
And, and that's, that's definitely doable. I think it's doable, yeah, I think it's doable. I mean...
Yeah, even if it's short, it keeps it on budget, too.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I mean, the, the challenge that we have, apparently, is, you know, is Elizabeth, and she'll, she's going to be working part-time while she's in our inventory, but she's continuing. She's got a, kind of a discrete number question. And we've got a, a pretty good staff that will be able to back her up and pitch it for her.
Can you send this draft as a Word document?
Did you print it out? For a Word document?
I don't have to, I don't have to.
I'll send it, I'll send it.
No, the one I sent, which was a draft.
Have you seen that?
It's the same thing.
Oh, it is, okay.
That's the same thing.
It's just written, not as a draft.
Oh, it's the original email from April 11th?
Yes.
I just think we got half the work done.
Yeah. Not that easy.
No, never is. So I think that's good, we're moving forward, we got the funding.
Yep.
What's the process with public hearings and this is, we do public hearings before we really get into the meat of it? And then, it's like, I, in the past, we had that site walk, and people were all upset in town, saying, "This is already done, and you guys are making decisions," and it wasn't, it was a standard bylaw that was put out there, and they didn't feel they had any input, which...
I think the process is really kind of up to you guys, I mean, I think we're happy to come out and do a site walk prior to the public hearing, that way people have some...
Our sidewalk's going up to Western Circle, did you know that?
No.
What, sidewalk?
No.
Is in Mark.
We're going to go up there.
So we need to do a, like a, like the information system?
We'll have to do a public hearing, well, if...
Because this would change zoning boundaries, you'd probably want to do a site walk.
Right, before that, we want to do a public, it's, it's a public hearing.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, none of it is sidewalks.
On the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk.
Unless we trip over the family maintain.
So what we need to do is we need to have an initial meeting open to the public, encouraging the public to attend. So we can get feedback initially, so that we don't go through a lot of work and have all the people who own these lots that are inside the little red lines say... We don't want this, we want to get, we're going to have to send them a letter and invite them and say, "We're considering making changes to the zoning on your property." I know a couple of the, in the front row, because they want to make some changes.
Will they be happy with it?
Yeah, well, I'm not sure, that's what we write, we have written, yeah, but they want changes from single residence district.
So you will notify everyone on that list?
Everyone, I think we want to notify everyone there and the butters. Because if someone, one of the butters has got a perfect spot that we didn't include, and they come in and say they're willing to add to it...
Like, can you add that one?
No.
I think Meyer and the associates can do all that with the butter stuff.
Yeah, no, usually you can just take the lines and pull them...
Oh, actually, yeah, I can do that.
So, but that's something we want to get feedback early, so we don't get blown out of the water later.
Like tonight?
Yes, well, yes. Alright, anyone else have questions or thoughts on village zoning?
Oh, it's good. Well, the zoning's going to be a zone thing.
I know, but I, I know, but I don't, I have to go over that one thing.
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
Alright, that's a good idea, we should include it.
Right, we should include it in that.
We should invite the town by planning, maybe also.
Yeah.
Get them involved, yeah, good.
So the, then the process would be, we would wait for some feedback from you guys on that, then schedule a site walk?
Yeah.
Do we want to have a site walk before the, just general feedback, because if we decide...
Oh, I thought that was sort of one of the same, because we're kind of in the right place right here.
Well, yeah, we're starting in the right spot, but I think if we do a site walk before we kind of have...
We don't know.
Things all more fleshed out. Because I know...
Oh, public hearing, no, no, with the, with the public hearing, you know, we may know, people say, oh, I don't want to say this is the public hearing, this is just a meeting.
Well, it's a public meeting, but...
A public meeting, but it's not a hearing for the zoning change.
Correct, right, way before that, yes. So maybe we do that meeting first with them, so we can put the idea out and invite all those owners and butters to those owners.
And then do a site walk.
And then say, "Okay, we're going to, we're going to take your feedback, and we're going to walk around and see how that, the next step kind of applies to this whole area." Who walks around?
Us all, or us?
Us.
Everybody, anybody, everybody. I think there was a...
First, a meeting with the public to discuss what this really is.
So they don't think it's a final thing, because if last site walk, they're like, "Oh, well, it's all done."
So then we do the site walk, to kind of really kind of get a sense of what, how that will impact the area, and then revise accordingly, and then do, you know, then before the public hearing.
I mean, if that's...
Meeting, site walk, public hearing, or maybe another meeting?
Well, yeah, and then a public hearing is, public hearing is sixty days before town meeting. Hopefully, we've got a lot of stuff set up in that timeframe.
Alright, the site walk will be in the summer, that'll be nice. June, when you say this is in...
Well, let's get you, let's see how long it takes you to get comments to me, so I can compile them and get them to...
We're not going to make them.